Got a bigger version of what you're going to say.
That's what I was just looking at. Thank goodness.
I can read it.
You guys ready? You guys ready? Staff, you up? All right. It's five o'clock. I'm going to call to order this city council workshop for February 11th, 2025. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
All right, let's dive right in. Two A, discussion of a policy to periodically update the city's building codes. Mr. Cox.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Wait for my PowerPoint real fast. We've been discussing the building code update and wanted to consider, or council to consider, a policy more or less to standardize the frequency of when we update the building codes. As you guys, some of you remember, when we updated to the 2018 code, we had a lot of process to go through from the '09 code.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to make sure we close that gap a little bit. It does fit in with one of our action items, ensure that development services processes and existing codes and ordinances are not impediments to development or redevelopment. One of those things is keeping up with modern codes to make sure that we don't have the design community designing backwards to arguably outdated codes. Maybe, there we go. So just a couple considerations. One, we could follow the state minimum standard, which we already exceed currently. FEMA looks at the latest two code cycles, so right now that would be 2024 and 2021, for their policies for reimbursement on rebuilding after disasters. And then we could obviously go to the other extreme and go with every single ICC code cycle, which is every three years. And I'll go through recommendations for those later on. So again, ICC publishes every three years. National Fire Protection Agency publishes a set every three years. Current state minimum standard is the 2012 set of building codes and the 2015 Energy Efficiency Code. As we look at cities across the state, that varies, it's very wide range. Some of your larger metropolitan areas are Class 1 departments, different staffing levels than we may ever reach. They update every three years, right on the cusp of publication. Other cities look at every other code cycle, every three cycles. Again, it varies widely. Again, the state minimum is 2012 currently. When we look at the code updates, and we did this when we looked at the 2021 codes last year, the Building Board of Appeals and Adjustments reviews those amendments, and they are a representation of the building community, listen to any community feedback, and then they make a recommendation to the city council. That's kind of the stakeholder involvement that we typically go through. Resilience and sustainability are obviously considerations. ICC does update the codes to look at new innovative building materials, disaster resilience. They study any catastrophic failures nationwide to see if there was any relation to building standards specifically, and then obviously general public and life safety updates. There is certainly an economic impact to that, trying to balance the regulatory life safety components with the construction costs and availability of materials. One of the things we've seen locally, if we stayed right on the cusp of new codes coming out, those new building materials or regulatory pieces may not be available yet in Kerrville. Probably would be in San Antonio, but we don't want to push the limit that close. They were causing contractors issues on getting materials, so we wouldn't want to stay right, you know, 2024, adopt the brand-new code.
Mm-hmm.
We'd want to space that out a little bit, and I'll go into that again in more detail. For implementation enforcement, your design professionals, primarily architects and those that are not licensed but still do building design, inspectors and our, our inspectors and plan reviewers, and then all of our building trade professionals, are required their continuing education based on the current codes. So when our inspectors go to classes and get their CEUs, they're looking at the 2021 or '24 code, even though we're still working in the '18 code currently in Kerrville. So the further out we push that, they're learning new stuff that we're not implementing yet. So, little inconsistency there at times. So what staff would recommend for consideration is every other code cycle, so a six-year frequency to review codes. Adopt the code two to three years after publication. So we've let some of the other communities and industries work out some of the bugs and kinks in the new code, make sure material availability has actually caught up to those new requirements. That would keep Kerrville three to four code cycles above the state minimum and keep us within FEMA recommendations for that two-year code cycle. And so I've got some examples of that here. We adopted the '06 code in 2009, and then we adopted the 2018 code in 2021. Tightening that just a little bit, we would consider the '24 code in 2026, and then in 20, consider the 2030 code in 2032. So that would keep us very close to the FEMA requirements of two-year, or the two cycles behind current standard, and certain, I assume, depending upon what legislature does, would keep us ahead of those state minimums by a couple cycles as well. So if council would like, we can certainly draft that policy and bring that back for your consideration and any further discussion, and I'd be happy to go through those, any of those slides and questions.
Let me start, if that's okay. There's a, it's, I've gone blank on the, on the board that reviews these and then makes recommendations to council. Would that be the next step, instead of us doing a policy?
They would review the actual code amendments, and we can certainly go to them and ask them for their recommendation on a policy.
Because they represent the building community, and they know better than I would.
We can do that.
They still know what the sequence should be.
That'd be the BBAA?
Yes, Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering that. It was on the slide, and then I called.
I wrote it down.
All right, any questions, please?
Looks like a good plan.
Good. We'll take it to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals and be back to you at a later date.
Okay, I remember when we went to the 2018 code, and we did that, what, in 2021?
Yes.
Okay, so the next code upgrade or update would happen, would happen this year?
We would actually propose it in 2026.
Okay.
Um, one.
To go to the 2024.
Correct.
Building code.
And then the next published code would be 2027. We would skip that code.
Okay.
And then look at the 2030 publication in 2032.
And what do you need from us then? I'm sorry.
Just direction on the policy. If, if you're comfortable with that recommendation, we'll take that back to the Building Board of Adjustments and get their recommendations as well and bring back a policy.
What do y'all think?
I agree with that. Yeah, not the BBAA.
I agree with that, but Drew, just let me ask you, I mean, we're working off of a 2018 code right now, we're in 2025.
Right.
We're looking at not updating what we have right now until 2026.
Correct.
So we're running kind of an eight-year spread, is that about right?
Correct.
Is that a little too far out? Or not, are we falling, I know we're falling along where we have to be, but as far as the timeframe of updates, eight years seems like, a lot can happen in eight years.
Correct. With the 2021 code that the Building Board of Adjustments reviewed, the only major update that was in there, they did add a, a chapter specifically for using shipping containers as building materials. Since we don't have that chapter adopted, we just require that the project be designed by an engineer, since we don't have those standards. So there are ways to fill some of those gaps, even though we're not quite up to the two-cycle minimum at this point. But rather than go to the 2021 right away, go ahead and wait a year. We'll work with the Building Board of Appeals this year to present '26, the '24 code.
Okay, so just bypass the 2021 altogether.
Correct.
And go straight to 2024.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
So we've got more so long next time.
Right.
And then from that, as recommended, that policy then would be a six-year cycle instead of eight years.
Mayor, council, and a lot of this stemmed too was, you know, and we're having, I think, BBAA is good, but really having kind of that council policy behind it, is y'all have something that you, y'all have teeth, you know, teeth behind. So in, you know, two years, or even in the next six years, you know, when we bring this back up and council's like, why are we doing this? We, we just did this in 2026. Hey, we, we wanted to adopt this, here's the rationale behind it. When people ask developers, y'all can very simplistically say, look, here's the FEMA requirements, here's the state requirements, and y'all actually have something objective that y'all can kind of get behind and a policy to get behind as well.
Just to point out that everything we say is simplistic, so thank you. Y'all okay with the policy?
Yes.
All right, sounds like you have consensus, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Item 2B, capital improvement projects. Mr. Burrow.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm not going to highlight any quality of life projects, we went over that at the last meeting, but feel free to ask any questions on those if, if you have any. First and foremost, public safety facility, just a quick highlight on that, we brought the change order last, last meeting. We're going to bring another one, hopefully the, the next meeting, not, not tonight's, but the second February meeting, for the first of the FFNE, the furniture package, that'll mostly compile of the office furniture, then we'll have another one scheduled probably March, April with some of the additional equipment. So we're working through the logistics of that right now. We've got some really good pricing in that we can really get behind and support. Moving forward, in about a month, we're going to get Slurry Seal. We're tentatively scheduled to get that at spring break. We wanted to have the least amount of impacts as possible, especially with bus routes, and with the streets that we have scheduled, it's going to be a very heavy residential area. So we're, we're working with the contractor, they think they can get it completed that week, you know, obviously weather pending, and we feel that it's going to be the best of everybody's interest if we can get in, get out while they're hopefully off vacationing. So Nap Forest Main, they're progressing well, that's the, the large sewer project that started near Town Creek, behind CVS, and essentially goes all the way to Walmart and then down to Raising Canes by the lake. We're about a month away from actually completing that, that's a water development board project, so that's been, you know, very welcoming getting that project going. They're about to, Old City Hall property right now, Ox Drive area, so that's, that's progressing well. We got out of the way for the Tech Dot letting project, which is the drainage under Highway 27. I know that's been a, a big area of interest for, for folks, so Tech Dot is, they, they say they're letting the project, that's still going to be a few months before they actually, you know, get the contract awarded and executed, so I'll keep you posted as, as I find out more on that one. Speaking of Tech Dot, the 2021 Transportation Alternatives Project, if you haven't been by the hospital area, J3 is doing an exceptional job over there and has majority of Wesley complete. There's just a little bit of the, the family practice area, we've got half a driveway and about 80 feet of sidewalk remaining, and that Wesley corridor will be done. Then they're moving to, to Coley Drive, where they've already actually started some of the, the demo, and I think they poured one driveway on the mall, so very, very well-received project in that area, and we're hoping to continue the progress. The last one I wanted to highlight was the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Next meeting, I plan to bring you at least four contracts, two design and two grant administration contracts. We received all six package, award packages on those, we have received approval. We've also received verification that the, the money from FEMA has been transferred to the state. And I know with a lot of the executive orders, there was some hesitation on that, but we did confirm that that is in Tiedem's account already, so we're going to continue moving forward with that. That's water system, sewer system, city hall, city youth, library, and central fire station generators. Big, big project, and it's going to be hopefully done within the next year. That's all I really had. Like I said, if you want to highlight any quality of life projects, you know, we can rehash that again, but if you've got any other questions, just let me know.
On item number three, the 2024 Slurry Seal.
Yes, sir.
Is there a list of those streets that have that work done?
Yes, I will verify, I believe it's still up on, on our website. There, it's a pretty substantial list. I think there was about 40 streets that we had on that one, because that was the 23 and 24 list.
Got you. On number seven, the design is now complete? Lois?
Design is complete, and we will actually bring back another design contract, if you will, to be more designed for the bid phase in any components. We've terminated our contract with Walker Partners and have asked Freeze and Nichols to step in, and I think we're looking to try to get that on next meeting as well, handling the construction administration, the water development board components of it. So we can discuss more at that meeting if, if desired.
Is the spring 2025 construction commencement optimistic, or?
Yes, yes, that, that's, that's the, update basically gets us, we have design complete, but what we're going to do now is, is get into bid phase and get Freeze and Nichols to help us through the water development board process. Any design modifications that come in during that bid phase will be handled through them, no longer Walker Partners.
That, that project's on my mind, because that's on my way to work every day, I look at it.
Yes, sir, another important one.
All right, anybody else have other, other specific questions for Mr. Burrow? Or even general questions for Mr. Burrow?
I have a general question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are we on the ribbon cutting on the KPD complex?
We haven't scheduled that one yet. So if you recall from the, the change order, the, essentially, construction is going to complete around June. We're about three months' time between the June burn completion, and then we get the FFNE package that I was mentioning, get them to bring all that stuff in the building. We are going to, in the median, have a Mason's celebration, we don't know the date on that one yet, but as far as ribbon cutting, we're probably looking at September, October timeframe.
Of this year?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr.?
In March, you will have some plans completed for the pool, Olympic Pool?
That's the goal. I got another set in Friday, so we're, we're doing one more review, hopefully the last review, and we will put that in, hopefully in bid, bid in March, bring it to you in April, first part of May for construction contract.
I have a lot of people asking me what's going, what's going to change, what will be improved, so that's great. I look forward to seeing it.
It'll be a new building, for sure.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Burrow?
I have a comment, not a question, and it goes kind of back to Mr. Hornis. You don't need to stand up, this is praise. So, Mr. Hornis, myself and Mitch Harold from Trune went out and toured Scott Shriners the other day, and wow, the work and the progress that they're doing out there. Let me tell you what, they take that pretty serious, because we had a bad weather day, and they already said, you can't get your crews in line, so they've already brought in a different, I guess I can say that, they brought in a different supervisor to get them back on track, and they were off because of weather days. So I was just like, but it's looking amazing with what they're doing, and thank you for the tour the other day.
Sure. No, they're pushing hard, the other folks, MC Fonseca, there's a lot of contractors on this project, so MC Fonseca is doing the bridges, and their contract is, is not for one bridge for $480,000, it's for all of the bridges and a lot of the work, so that was a funny one to after review. And then also, the Public Works Department's done a fantastic job helping out with some of the projects, so that way we're, we're saving a little bit on, on contractors and having that in-house work, as well as Shane's Department, those guys are out there doing smaller projects on their own, and just only really the cost of materials is attached to the project, so we're excited.
It's coming along awesomely, so.
I know we have a lot going on, Mr. Burrow, thank you for your, your hard work and your department's hard work.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And Michael, thank you for your hard work. All right, if it's okay, we're going to move on to 2C. Update, update regarding Ridgeland, Ms. Terrence.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We'll make this brief, I hope to answer any questions, and I can clarify some compliance, things that have come up, that we want to make sure everybody is on the same page and understands what we're doing as far as making sure that Ridgeland subdivision is moving on in a compliant way. So just a couple things to point out about the agreement, it's really important to understand what net sales price is and what we're really looking for as we look at that agreement and things come in from Lennar each month. So the agreement defines net sales price as any incentive or closing assistance that developer pays on behalf of a homeowner. So basically, an incentive can be a seller credit, which is just a straight-up cash discount type of thing, it can be closing assistance, it can be mortgage interest credit, or really anything else that is defined, that falls into that, any and all credits. And so we kind of use that as a guide. So the max sales price is really determined, or what we determine it with is used in Texas Department of Housing's max sales price, and those are updated annually by county in the state of Texas, and those are online, so you can see how those are set for new construction and existing homes. So that's really what we use as our guide, as far as what Lennar can sell a home at, as far as the net sales price. So that's really what we're trying to get to when we look at those each month. So they provide us a report every month that complies with this agreement, and that means their settlement statements, but we've kind of gone a step further and developed together a compliance template that we use. It's not outlined in the agreement, but we've worked with them so that we can kind of quantify that mortgage interest credit, which to me was one of my big questions when we first started, is how are we getting to that number? And so we built up this template together that kind of is an easy way for us to plug and play, I guess, every month, and just double-check those. Every month, they provide us a list of all the homes sold, that's going to include the base price, any incentives, and then how we got down to the net sales price, and I'll show you one of those in a second. So we review their settlement statements. Now, the agreement does call for a HUD 1, and so when we very first got our, our first round of reporting back in 2023, we saw that, because they sent us an ALTA instead, and so we laid those two statements side by side, and basically what we found with that and some research is the ALTA actually provides more comprehensive look at what is on there.
What is ALTA?
American Land and Title Association, so it's not a Lennar form, it's actually a state form, and a lot of mortgage companies are going to that form instead. And so we've done a lot of research, and while we probably do need to modify the language of the, the agreement, just to clarify what we're using, you know, that could change, so maybe we use HUD in equivalent, or HUD 1 in equivalent, or something like that. But the bottom line is, we really believe that that statement satisfies what we're asking them to provide to us. So then we even went a step further, and we built out a template that replicates that ALTA, and worked through the numbers ourself to make sure that, you know, we could calculate them the same way that they were providing those to us. So just so that you can see, this is just a screenshot of one month, just to show you kind of what we do as a calculation every month. So we look at what's the base price, any price reductions that they may have provided to the buyer, so if it was a cash deal, then you'll see only the price reduction, or you might see closing assistance, or the owner title premium, anything like that that was paid for by Lennar, and that gets you to your adjusted price right there. Then you have your loan incentives, and this is really why we built this template, is because we needed to quantify what that was, because it can't be a random number. And so there's some different ways they come to what that number is, and buyers really have the say-so over what kind of incentives they use where. So, you know, if I had, you know, maybe I needed extra buy-down on my points because my credit wasn't as good as someone else, then maybe I would want it on the mortgage incentive and not so much on the closing, or, so there's, there's some variables there that affect that, and so we've actually worked through like five or six different deal sheets with Lennar to look at specifics on each deal, to see kind of how you quantify that and how that makes sense, to make sure we understood it and that we were comfortable with the net sales price based on that calculation. So with that, you know, I just kind of listed out there what our calculation is, what is the base price, that's the price that's listed, so if you go over there, that's what they're going to tell you the sales price of that house is. And then just walked you through the definitions there on how we look at it each month, and then again, that, that owner's, I'm sorry, that mortgage interest credit that just is variable with every, with every different, every home, it's a little bit different.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
What, what is the mortgage interest reduction, what's, how's that calculated?
Well, it's different for every loan, so that is money that, let's say you went in and you have great credit, and Lennar owns a package of, of mortgage that they can do a 4% interest, and you have great credit, so you're going to qualify for that, and they're going to buy it down from what the market rate is, so if the market rate today is six, and they're providing you with a 4%, then that's the difference between.
How's that calculated, though?
It's a long calculation.
Net present value of the payments?
Correct. Well, it's not the total life of the loan, though, it's only the current, it's the, at right now, at, as of today's calculation, and again.
Not the amount of dollars.
No, because we did the amount of dollars, we actually did an amortization schedule to see what that actually looks like, and it's, a 7% loan compared to a 4.5% loan is, I mean, you know, it's over $100,000 on the life of the loan, so.
So it's just a net present value?
It's a net present value, yes, that's right. It's today only, it's not calculating anything in the future, it's just today. And so, yes, and that varies, the reason we worked through several deals is because it can vary so much based on each homeowner and what they're, what the buyer's choosing. Are we going to use all of our credit on mortgage interest buy-down, or are we going to use all of it on a cash credit?
Can we just take the net present value of the stream of the difference in the payments?
Yes, yes, yep, because a lot of times people are just trying to get down to what's my monthly payment, and how is my loan going to be structured that best fits my family and my budget? So that's why every loan looks a little bit different, so. So I just wanted to give you a few statistics here, so through December, 80 units were sold. Average net sales price of all of those is right at 254,000. We did have eight properties that exceeded that net sales price, but seven of those were actually caught by Lennar before it got to us from a compliance, and they pointed that out, and then gave us information on how they corrected that with each of those buyers. One of them was caught here, and as soon as we pointed it out, then they corrected that. And so we've really have a good contact over there, we feel like, and anytime we ask them for something, they've been really good about providing that. Side note, and really doesn't have anything to do with compliance, but I think it's important to know that that property was at zero assessed value, and now, we, I know that in 2025, I just checked with the appraisal district last week, we have 13 million in new value that's going to be on 2025's tax roll. So we're about, I'm estimating between 2024 million, depending on some exemptions and some other things in there, but we do have quite a few, you know, several million dollars in added tax roll, too, so that was just kind of a side note to that. So I just kind of wanted to walk you through, you know, what we do every month, we receive these reports no later than the middle of the month, and then if we need to schedule a call with them to walk through anything we do, and we'll walk through specific deals if we have questions on something, and they've been really helpful. The other thing I think that's important is when you're looking at two side by side, I can roll fees into my loan, and so if I choose to do that, then I can. If I have an FHA loan, or if I have a VA loan, or anything like that, and there are expenses related to that, I can roll those in, but those are pass-through costs, so it's not something that Lennar is necessarily pocketing, so.
So the bottom line here is, Lennar is living up to the agreement and the contract that they made with the city for homes in a certain price range that are workforce housing, correct?
Based on the letter of the contract, they absolutely are. And, and Michael and I have gone through it, and Dalton and I have gone through it, and we've picked it frontward, backwards, and every way you could pick it, and we truly believe that they're, based on the contract terms, yes, they are.
Okay, I'd like to see this put to rest.
If I could get a copy of what you can share with me, I know some of it's confidential, like especially this last summary would be great. And so on page five, we are, that's where the net sales price term is listed, and that's the question that we had was, and you've answered it, y'all have answered it thoroughly, backwards, forwards, you name it. So thank you very much.
And it does get confusing, you know, and we've done a lot of work with Lennar to make sure that we're really being able to quantify that mortgage interest credit, because for me, that was the initial question, is how are we calculating that? How are we, you know, what does that look like? And the bottom line is, it looks different for every, every buyer, depending on how they're choosing to use their incentives.
Right.
I think one of the really important parts, the, for, for our portion of it, is when we get to that adjusted sale price, that's, that's, that's their mortgage, right? And then we have that reduction based on the interest rate, and that gets us to the net price, but that adjusted price, when Julie mentioned those fees, somebody has a VA fee they want to put on there, that's, that could be anywhere, that's a five-figure number, that's $10,000, $15,000 potentially. If somebody wants to do further interest buy-down beyond what Lennar has bought, that's another portion. So a $295,000 loan could end up being a $320,000 note, which is what you saw at the previous meeting, but we don't, we don't take it to that extreme, because we don't have any responsibility for, you know, if you're a vet, if you're going through FHA and you want to put your fee on that, that's not a part of our agreement with Lennar. That is separate and apart, and that's their personal business.
Or down payments, you'll see some notes that are really low, because someone maybe, you know, put a, a large sum of money down, that affects that as well.
Well, I'm thrilled, and I really would, I could use that last page if nothing else. That would be, just send it. that would be, just send it electronically.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Julie, thank you, because you and I have talked about this a little bit in-depth as well, and Michael, you brought up the, the one in particular that was at 323,000, line number eight, if I remember correctly, off the spreadsheet that was provided to us, and that was a VA loan, the gentleman was a VA service member, but he wasn't service-connected, so he did not get his funding fee waived. So like Michael said, I'm just dropping the point home a little bit here, but you add it in, and, but my question, you run these reports monthly, how many extra hours have you had to, and your team had to put into this since all this has been coming up?
Quite a few.
Quite a few, so just.
Quite a few.
Okay.
Several.
But you're, but you're keeping this spreadsheet anyway.
Yeah, you run the.
Yeah, this, this compliance is something we do every month regardless, you know, sometimes trying to make it to where we can explain it in a, in a good way is, is different.
That's the challenge.
But we do this every month, I mean, we, we look at these, these templates as soon as they come in from Lennar, and, and they're pretty timely, and we ask them for them by the 15th, and usually we get them around seven through eight, you know, somewhere around there. Soon as they have time to wrap them up, they're sending them, and they are sending them to us in Excel now with all the calculations already in there that we've worked to build out, so they've gone a few steps further too, to make sure they're not just going, well, here's your altas and have a nice day, they're not, they're not doing that, so.
Ms. Barrance, can I just give the Reader's Digest version? Here it is. Lennar is in compliance, and not because they say so, because we check.
Yes, sir, and we do check.
Good. Any other comments?
No.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All of y'all.
There's no need to go to executive session, so I will adjourn this workshop at 3:31.